Well, good evening. It's Thursday, November 20th. And with that, I would like to call this session of the Ridgefield City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Okay. Ms. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Oh, Ms. Diana.
Sorry. Didn't know you were driving the ship tonight.
Counselmember Davis?
Present.
Counselmember Favella?
Here.
Counselmember Wells?
Here.
Counselmember Burkle?
Present.
Counselmember Hamilton?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chipman?
Here.
Mayor Cole?
Here. Thank you very much. Mr. Stewart, are there any late changes to the agenda?
No late changes, Mayor.
All right. We're going to move on to public comment. It's not time for public comment, but anybody wishing to address city council regarding items not subject to a specific public hearing may come forward at this time. To the podium or use your raise hand feature located on the toolbar at the bottom of your Zoom screen for controls over the phone, press star nine for raise hand and press star six for mute or unmute. And please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody here who would like to give a public comment? Ms. Lindsay?
There's no light.
Blue.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Jennifer Lindsay. I am a Ridgefield resident. I just wanted to take a few moments to thank Mayor Cole for coming in to speak to the fifth graders at Sunset Ridge Intermediate School at the beginning of November. He took an hour out of his, I know, very busy schedule to talk to the kids about local government and how it functions. And he was very engaging and he let the kids ask them all the tough questions. And he was very patient with them and he answered all of them, including about his pets and his favorite color and...
How much I make?
How much you make. You're not supposed to be... Excuse me, Mayor, there's not supposed to be any back and forth with the public. All the hard-hitting questions. So I really... You made a big impression on them. And I just think everybody in the community should know that we're really lucky to have you as an elected official in our community, coming into our schools and making a difference. So thank you so much. The kids made you a thank you card. So of course they did. They made you. You did an awesome job. So I will give it to Ms. Diana because I'm not supposed to talk to you. And thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm delighted.
Wow, I'm delighted to meet you.
Thank you so much. And I get to do that again tomorrow at Ms. Thornton's third grade class. And so I hope they're every bit as spirited as your class was. It was a lot of fun. Yeah. Thank you very much. Ms. Winters?
Ms. Winters, I'm Kathy Winters. I live at 214 North Ford Avenue, home of a lot of the leaves. And I'm here... Did you hear me? Yeah. Oh, sorry. I'll just... Oh, okay. Thank you. Do you want me to start over again? And I'm here to just... I was hoping more people would be here, actually, because I'm here to tell you that the Ridgefield Art Association is sponsoring an art gallery in downtown Ridgefield. And it's exciting. It's going to be in about a quarter of the hardware store. We'll have the door on the south side and like two windows. So we'll have a lovely spot, high ceilings, art changing monthly, lots of classes, lots of things going on. And I've pledged... I don't... A lot of you were here 10 years ago when I did my 80-for-80 campaign for the library. Well, next month, or January, is my 90th birthday and I'm doing 90 for 90, but not $90,000. $9,000 to raise money to equip the gallery because we're going to need lights and tables and a desk, all kinds of things. So I'm asking the community. And since I don't have a blog anymore, I have to do it in person. So I've been going to a lot of meetings. But I just wanted you to know, we are a nonprofit, so the money you don't donate is tax deductible, which is a nice little perk. And for everyone who donates $1,000 or more, I will paint a watercolor, small watercolor picture for you from the foot... From the photograph of your choice. It'll be a mated and ready for an 11-by-14 inch frame. So that's my spiel, and you probably will hear me again and again. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and good to see you. Thank you so much. Is there anybody else in the room tonight wishing to give public comment? Ms. Diana, anybody online?
I do not see anybody.
Okay. We will go ahead and close public comment and move on to our consent agenda. Counsel, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Counsel, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you, Counsel. Motion passes and we'll move on to our first item of business. Tonight, we'll be having the second reading of ordinance number 1465. This is the 2026 property tax levy and revenues. And we're going to go to you, Mr. Johnson, to give a presentation on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Not a long presentation. We've gone over this multiple times. So property tax baked into the budget is 1% increase. And with that increase, it's just under $25,000 spread out over the entire tax base. Total property tax budget this year is 2.65 million. And I'll answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, this is second reading.
Yes, Counsel, this is second reading. So is there any questions that you have for Mr. Johnson or staff on this at this point? Okay. Easy, easy business. Okay. If not, Ms. Diana, would you please read the ordinance into the record?
Ordinance number 1465, an ordinance of the City of Ridgefield establishing an estimated ad valorem taxes necessary to finance the anticipated requirements of the City of Ridgefield, Washington for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2026 by increasing property tax revenue from the previous year.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, is there... I'd accept a motion on this ordinance?
I move to adopt ordinance number 1465 as presented.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Hamilton, seconded by Counselor Favella. Counsel, any remaining discussion on this? Seeing none. Ms. Diana, would you please call the roll?
Counselmember Davis?
Aye.
Counselmember Favella?
Yes.
Counselmember Wells?
Yes.
Counselmember Burkle?
Aye.
Counselmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chipman?
Yes.
Mayor Cole?
Yes. Thank you. Counsel, it looks like the motion passes. All right. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our second item of business now. This is the second reading of ordinance number 1466. This is 2026 water utility rate codes. And again, over to you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. For the water utility rates, again, this is in the budget. As Counsel is well aware, we did a rate study back in 2023, and this is part of the rate study that was approved at that time by Counsel. For the water rates, it's a 3% increase for an inflationary increase. And what that will provide or what that changes for a household, a residential household of 1,600 cubic feet, which is the average, would be about $2.24 per bimonthly billing cycle. And we have gone over this pretty significantly before, so I'll answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Johnson. Counsel, any discussion on this item? Or any questions for staff at this point? Okay. See, none. Ms. Diana, would you please read this ordinance into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1466, an ordinance of the City of Ridgefield, Washington, amending Ridgefield Municipal Code, Chapter 13.35, and ordinance number 1436, adjusting the bimonthly water rates.
Thank you very much, Counsel. I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1466 as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Mayor Protem Chipman, seconded by Counselor Burkle. Any remaining discussion on this? Seeing none. Ms. Diana, would you please call the roll?
Counselmember Davis?
Aye.
Counselmember Favella?
Yes.
Counselmember Wells?
Yes.
Counselmember Burkle?
Aye.
Counselmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chipman?
Yes.
Mayor Cole?
Yes. Thank you, Counsel. Motion carries. Okay. On to our next item of business. This will be the second reading of ordinance number 1467. This is our 2026 stormwater utility rate code amendments. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. And similar to what we just mentioned on the water utility rates, as we did do a rate study back in 2023 for the stormwater as well, Counsel did approve the rate model at that time. The rate increase that is proposed for 2026 is a 10% increase at $2.76 per bimonthly billing. That would increase the bimonthly rate to $30.36, again, bimonthly. With that, we've gone over this multiple times, so I'll answer any questions about this.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Johnson or staff on this one? All right. Easy peasy. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Diana. Would you please read this ordinance into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1467, an ordinance of the City of Ridgefield, Washington, amending Ridgefield Municipal Code, Chapter 13.75, and ordinance number 1437 to amend fees and change charges for the stormwater utility by increasing the bimonthly stormwater rate.
Thank you, Counsel. I'd accept a motion for this one.
I move to accept ordinance number 1467 as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Burkle, seconded by Counselor Wells. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Diana, would you please call the roll?
Counselmember Davis?
Aye.
Counselmember Favella?
Yes.
Counselmember Wells?
No.
Counselmember Burkle?
Aye.
Counselmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chipman?
Yes.
Mayor Cole?
Aye. Thank you very much. Looks like it carries. Thank you. Okay. On to our final item of business tonight. This is the approval of Paradise Point Phases 6 through 10 final plat. And we'll switch it up and go to Ms. Lust. Over to you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Counsel and members of the public. The agenda item before you is a final plat for Phases 6 through 10... Excuse me. Phases 6 through 10 of Paradise Point. Next slide, please. All right. So generally speaking, the location of Paradise Point is in the north of the city, just west of Interstate 5. Phases 1 through 5 have already been plotted. Phases 6 through 10, the subject of this presentation, are in the northeastern portion of the subdivision. All right. So the screen now shows a close-up of the subdivision with the phases labeled. Again, Phase 6 through 10 are in the northeastern portion of the site. Phase 11 is in the far, far northeast corner there. Next slide. The overall subdivision has 291 lots. Phases 6 through 10 represent 63 of those single-family detached residential lots on approximately 23 acres. The lots range from 8,000 square feet to 14,178 square feet, and the average lot area in these phases is 10,634 square feet, so just shy of a quarter acre. The majority of Paradise Point's parks and open space are, of course, in Storybook Hollow Park. So this phase doesn't have a large park and trail network. However, it is adjacent and accessible to Storybook Hollow. Track J in the southern portion of Phases 6 and 10 does have a trail that extends towards that central park and trail feature. It's actually built with the previous phases. And then there's just an open space tract in the northwest corner there, Tract L, associated with some critical areas. Otherwise, it's a system of streets and single-family residential lots. As usual, we go through survey, engineering, and land use review before bringing final plots to Counsel. All survey comments have been addressed. Engineering, sometimes Counsel sees projects come forward with a performance bond. There is no performance bond for this project. All improvements are complete. A condition of approval will require the applicant to obtain final engineering acceptance before we sign the final plot Mylar. Land use review, everything complete. The city attorney reviewed the CCNRs and found them to be compliant with code. Those will be recorded at the time of final plat. And then finally, RDC 1827060 allows the urban holding overlay to be removed from a property concurrent with final plat approval. So part of the request this evening is to remove the urban holding 10 overlay from Paradise Point Phases 6 to 10. And with that, I will go ahead and hand it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lust. Okay. Counsel, I'll look to all of you for any questions for staff on this item. Anybody? Just a quick comment. I actually was taking somebody on a tour today. I drove up there just to see Storybook Hollow Park. It's coming along really nicely, just a beautiful park. The developments turned out really nice. The bridge also turned out really lovely. So it's a really cool development. So excited to see that all kind of come to fruition and see where our park is going to be and miss all of that. Yeah. So it's kind of an exciting step for us.
Yeah. I just wanted to add that I appreciate the incorporation of some trails, like through the actual neighborhood, not just in the open spaces. Looking up there, there's like three different places where the trails go. And I think it's nice. It adds character, but it also keeps, you know, that few of people on just taking the sidewalk down and, you know, some of the risks that go with that. And so I appreciate that being a component of the overall development.
Counselor Wells?
The comment I got, I'm looking at the... It'd be the northeast corner between 289th and Royal Road. I see they've held the development back, I guess, to accommodate for the roundabout that'll be there down the road someday, which is great.
That's correct. There's a tract at the corner there that is not being developed as lots to allow for future road improvements.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments for staff on this, Counsel? If there are none, I would accept a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Paradise Point Phases 6 through 10 final plat.
I'll second.
Great. It's been moved by Mayor Protem Chipman, seconded by Counselor Wells. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Counsel. Motion carries. Happy to get that done. And then we have a couple of public hearings we're going to move into tonight. The first one we're going to move into is the first reading of ordinance number 1468. This is Ridgefield Municipal Code Amendments, Part III. Ms. Lust?
Thank you again, Mayor. This first public hearing this evening is on a batch of proposed code amendments. I think, as I've mentioned previously, we usually bring you guys one large batch, but there were a lot of things this year, so splitting it out into a few parts. The focus of Part III is the sign code, although as these things go, we found a couple other items to put in there as well, so we'll cover signs plus. But I'll go ahead and start with signs. So just for some background, this proposed sign code has gone to Planning Commission and their comments and guidance are provided in the summary table, which begins on page 111 of your packet. They ultimately did recommend approval with consideration for their comments and guidance in there. Some other outreach we have done is our staff does a lot of work with sign companies. Our planner has reviewed dozens of sign permits over the past couple of years, which is fantastic because that typically means those are new businesses that are opening in Ridgefield. But definitely built good relationships with folks from the sign companies. So the draft code has been provided to them as well as information about both the Planning Commission hearing and the hearing this evening. As of today, we haven't received any comments from that community, but they have had the opportunity to review what's being proposed. All right. So go ahead and get started on the sign items. If you go to the table in packet, page 111, the first item there was a proposal to exempt historic markers from sign permit requirements. Planning Commission brought up a fantastic point, which was to question if that conflicts with content neutrality rules for signs. I conferred with our city attorney and she did have concerns about that. So although it is in your table, professional guidance there would be to remove it from the list. All right. The next two items have to do with cabinet signs. For some background on this, until a few years ago, the sign code didn't talk about cabinet signs. And then a prohibition was added to prohibit backlit cabinet signs. And then last year, some parties brought up issues with that prohibition, but perhaps it was too strict. What about cabinet signs where just the words and the logos and symbols are illuminated? So it's not... The whole thing isn't a lit plastic box. You can do the plastic box as long as it's only partially lit. So ultimately, in last October, I issued a director's interpretation based on some snippets of code language that cabinet signs with only the lettering, logos, and symbols illuminated or permitted. Director's interpretations of this nature aren't meant to stand in for code forever, so the proposal is to take that interpretation and codify it. Some of the pictures shown on this slide, the Rose Hours Fuel Station sign, that was approved before our code said anything about cabinet signs. Wasn't quite dark when I took the picture, but that is an example of what that sort of blanket prohibition was going after, was signs where the whole cabinet is illuminated. Again, the sign was permitted when it was built. Nothing against that sign in particular, but just to give Counsel a reminder of what the prohibition on backlit cabinet signs was targeted towards. And then the other signs are just... The other pictures are just examples of cabinet signs being built around the city under the 2024 director's interpretation. Those are absolutely allowed. We just include language in the decision approving the sign that only the letters, logo, and symbols may be illuminated. So I'll go ahead and pause and hand it back to you for any questions.
Counsel, any questions at this point? Okay.
All right. We'll move on to the next slide. And before I get into this one, there's one line item in the table I don't have a slide for, which is a proposal to allow more than four accessory signs if the applicant demonstrates that additional signs are required for safe user circulation on a site. So currently, our code limits a single site to a maximum of four accessory signs. These are often manifesting as things like entry exit for drive-throughs and other sort of directional signs on a site. And the proposal is to create a little flexibility there to allow for additional ones in cases where a site user can provide enough detail to staff showing that, yes, that would improve the safety and user friendliness of the site. Any thoughts on that item before we move into this slide before you?
I'm looking around. I don't... No, I don't see anybody.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So the proposal illustrated on the slide before you is to... This is for freestanding monument signs. Require the sign base to be earth-toned and prohibit wraps or like peel-and-stick vinyl on sign bases that just look like brick or stone but are two-dimensional. The image on the right is an example of a really well-done sign base that is clearly three-dimensional stone-like material. We see a lot of these in Ridgefield. People generally do a great job with this anyway, but we have, in the past year or so, had a couple of cases where it looked like it might be going down the peel-and-stick path, and we managed to skirt around that and get a better product, but would propose adding some clear language in the code to that effect.
So on the image on the far left there, like that one's crossed out, like is that crossed out because that is a peel-and-stick application or what's wrong with that one?
It is a peel-and-stick application.
Okay. Good.
Okay.
We can go on.
Move along to the next slide. All right. This item has to do with monument signs in residential zones. Currently, our code does not have any dimensional standards for monument signs in residential zones, which of course you don't see a ton of, but you do see entry signs for subdivisions. And generally speaking, again, applicants have done a good job of appropriately scaled monument signs for subdivision entryways, but our code does not have dimensional standards that we would be able to enforce. So the proposal is to set the area and height limits for monument signs in residential zones to be the same as those in the commercial neighborhood business and RMUO zones, which is a maximum 75 square feet and a maximum height of 12 feet. And we do, for sign measurements, limit the square footage to the sign itself. We do allow sort of the accoutrements around the sign to exceed that, as illustrated in some of these examples.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Have we had any developers pursue anything larger than 75 square feet?
It's a good question. Something we can look into.
No need, I think. Just the fact that you couldn't even... It's not like it happens all the time. I mean, I'm supportive of this, but I was just kind of curious how often it occurred, if any.
Yeah. The example on the upper right of the screen, Paradise Point, driving around, that's one of the larger monument entry panels you see. And this portion of the panel with the lettering on it is a little under 70 square feet approximately. So we're not really seeing bigger than that.
Yeah. But it makes... To me, it makes sense to have, just so we don't have to go down the path, right? I think it makes sense.
Thank you. Yeah. I'm just going to piggyback on that because I was thinking the same thing. So I'm hard-pressed to think of an example of like a larger sign. I think Paradise Point, one sticks out. But it just begs the question, like, where did this come from? If this isn't an issue, why make it an issue?
Sure. I think really this came from staff seeing numerous proposals for monument signs and not really having any metrics to review them under.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It makes sense. I'm in favor of it. Counselor Wells?
Yes. I do question the 75 square feet. 75 square feet is two sheets apply width, 32 square feet per sheet, so it's 64. So they can't have a monument... I mean, a sign larger than 75 feet. I question that. There are some that are bigger. I know one. I know two. I know three. Well, and that one there... Claire, you said that Paradise Point was only 75 feet or just a little over?
Says it 66 square foot there. What about 60?
No, it says 66 square feet.
Yeah. For the inner panel with the writing on it, based on the plans I saw.
So it is not considering the stone each below the lettering or above?
It's considering the rectangle with the writing on it, not the columns to either side.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Burkle?
Just to comment on the Paradise Point sign, I think we need to take into consideration the size and the scope of that fence. the size and the scope of that fence. I think the size of that sign is absolutely appropriate for Paradise Point. Would it be appropriate for Wishing Wells? Probably not, but for Paradise, I think it's absolutely spot on.
Great, thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you. Sort of to that same point, I was wondering on the flip side, do we have minimums that people have to meet so that it doesn't look too small within a larger scope?
We do not have currently in the code minimum sign area for monument signs in any zone.
Worth considering. Okay, any other questions or comments? Counselor Davis, looks like you, or Counselor Favela, do you have a comment first?
I was just going to echo that. I think maybe if we're going to do a maximum, also doing a minimum too, because it would be nice to have some cohesion and then you have a neighborhood and they bring in like a really tiny sign and there's really nothing saying you can't do that, but at least have it fit within the design of the neighborhood. So I don't know, we don't need to get into that now and get back onto the color discussion, but yeah, it might be.
I was a spirited debate, I'm all for it, so.
Not tonight, Mayor, not tonight. But yeah, maybe considering that if we're doing maximum, maybe look at minimum as well.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, my only thought on that, and I'm not saying I wouldn't support it, but I look at the example on the left, Kemper Grove, and that's 15 square foot. My imagination is if we were to make a minimum, it would probably be that, but I think that I like that. Like I think it looks nice, but it's also accented by the landscape, which is definitely something that we should encourage as well. So I mean, I agree that's a separate conversation, but I wouldn't want to dissuade people from doing more minimalist, natural-looking things as well, if they fit. So anyway, I look forward to that conversation.
Yeah, I would just add my two cents on that too. Like I wouldn't be opposed to minimums size, but it kind of gets arbitrary really quick because a 15-foot sign may, 15 square feet might feel really big on one corner and really small like on a corner like this. And so it seems like it's kind of more contextual than anything else. And so while I think it might be a good idea, I think you're going to end up with scenarios where it's not going to feel like it's going quite right no matter what, so. But like having the maximum, obviously, like, you know, 75 square feet, two sheets of plywood, apparently, but that's pretty big. So it's good to cap it at some point, but yeah.
I just said that two was on.
Oh, you were on, okay, my bad.
Two sheets of plywood is 64.
Oh.
It's 64 square feet. So 75 is a little bigger than two sheets of plywood.
Gotcha.
So I didn't want, or you just restate that.
Gotcha, thank you, sir. Other comments before moving on? Back to you.
All right, before moving on from this slide, this discussion on this item with Planning Commission raised an interesting point, which is, okay, we're basing that proposal of 75 square feet on the existing code for the neighborhood business and RMUO zones. Does that make sense for RMUO? Especially in like horizontal mixed use where you have a residential area and a commercial area? Should the sign requirements for the commercial area of an RMUO site just be the commercial sign standards?
I would say so because you kind of, you have to kind of like default to the, I guess the minimum standard for whichever application, so commercial in that case, it feels like it should just default to commercial standards. Counselor Davis, we'll start with you and we'll work our way down.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great point. I'd want to do a deeper dive in what those look like. I mean, my initial concern would be like placement where you could have like a bright sign shining in somebody's window, ala the Seinfeld episode with Kenny Rogers' Roasters, if anybody remembers that one. But it happened, right? I mean, that was an episode. But that would be my concern is, you know, that there would be residential application, just a blanket residential application would, I'd be concerned with that. So I don't want to do a deep dive, but I would lean that way, right? Anyway.
Counselor Favela? No, nothing? Mayor Protam? Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you. I was just thinking, so I think there is something to be said about what Counselor Davis just said, but also something to be said about like commercial portions needing different flexibility due to their visibility and getting people to come into their businesses. And if you are in that mixed hub, I think you are already kind of understanding that you're in more of a hub than a residential neighborhood. So I think that I could, with more data and more information from you and examples, obviously, see more flexibility for visibility with commercial versus residential can kind of be more scaled down.
Okay.
All right, we will get you some more information and options on that before this comes back.
Thank you.
All right, the next slide I have is on freeway-oriented signs. By the time I got out there at 4:15, it was already getting dark, so I couldn't get good photos of them. So you get the plans for a couple of these, my apologies. The proposal here is to add provisions requiring pole and monument signs adjacent to I-5 to have an earth toned sign base that is at least 25% of the pole height. In-N-Out Burger, we worked with them extensively on their sign to balance the allowance to do a 50-foot sign with the city's design requirements and expectations. And where they landed is a sign base that is just under 30% of the pole height. It's the height of the pole, not the height of the entire sign, so between the ground and the sign cabinet. So that's where the proposal for 25% comes from, sort of rounding down from that. Couple other examples, on the left is the new Ridgefield Gateway sign, that's kind of right next to the In-N-Out Burger sign. You can see that they have a sign base that is nearly half of the distance between the ground and the bottom of the sign cabinet. One that was built a while ago is the 7-Eleven sign, terrible lighting, but it has a base, the base is shorter. So currently, we have the requirement for the sign to have a base, but we don't have a requirement for the base to be a certain height. So the proposal is to add that requirement for these freeway-oriented signs that can be up to 50 feet high.
Okay, I'll start at my far left. Counselor Hamilton, anything on this one?
Well, I'm just noting the Planning Commission's notes about prohibiting pole signs in general. I wondered if there were any, was any feedback from staff on thoughts on that because you obviously know more about that.
Yeah, it was mentioned, not extensively, but mentioned at Planning Commission. And my goal this evening is to simply show counsel the same thing that Planning Commission saw, so haven't done more research or looked at comparable codes for that at this point.
Counselor Burkle, anything from you, sir?
Wow, it's an interesting issue. I really have a problem with the McDonald's sign. I don't know that the base matches the height of the sign, or maybe you can help me better state what I'm trying to say. I think the In-N-Out sign I see is appropriate. The 7-Eleven that I see here, it looks different in the photograph than it does in real life. But I think, for me, the problem sign I have is McDonald's. Thank you.
Counselor Wells?
Only question I have, did you get any comments back from the sign makers on these three different scenarios?
We did not receive any comments back from the sign companies, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protam, anything from you?
Didn't you say that there's something else, sorry, that there's something additional going on, on to the McDonald's sign? It isn't finished at this point, is it?
It is finished.
It is finished?
Yep.
Okay.
Counselor Favela?
Yes, I also have a problem with the McDonald's sign. But when I try to think critically of what is my problem with the sign, I'm not sure if it's where it is actually located and placed and had that been placed maybe somewhere different than right there on the sidewalk, if I would feel differently. So I don't, it's too much blah, and then just McDonald's bam, it just hits you in the face, right, as soon as you get off the freeway. And I don't, I would not appreciate another sign like that in that area. So I don't know if it's placement or just the whole, all of it. Yeah, it's not good.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Davis, anything from you?
Nothing that's not already been shared.
Yeah. I guess that goes back to hearing what my colleagues have said about said McDonald's sign, you know, like, and then there's the question about pole signs. I think McDonald's was really following the letter of the law, if it were, whereas In-N-Out was sort of like, there was sort of a negotiation or kind of pushing it because we didn't allow, like, encourage pole signs. But in this case, it feels like pole signs maybe may be more attractive. So I don't, I don't know if I have anything, any comment other than just observing that and I don't have a strong opinion either way.
We'll get used to it.
Yeah. The world will keep turning.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, counsel, before we move on from this one? Okay?
Thank you.
All you.
All right, so the last item I have isn't on the list because it just came up a few days ago. Staff's working with a sign company who is working on signs for Hillhurst Commercial on Hillhurst and Sevier, which is in the commercial neighborhood business zone. And they're working through sign illumination together. And our code has language in it that prohibits internally illuminated signs in the C&amp;B zone. They can have lights like goosenecks shining on it. And at this point, that they're thinking that's probably a viable option for the sign, but it did raise a question that I wanted to bring to counsel as part of this batch of code updates, is whether staff should look at updating the language around internally illuminated signs in the neighborhood commercial zone.
I would be open to it just to see some comparative examples. I think I understand like the idea behind this because it is in a neighborhood, you don't want a big, bright Kenny Rogers' Roasters sign where you live. So maybe having like the gooseneck signs is a little less intrusive, but it might be, like, I go back to some of the first slides you showed, like, you know, the Rose Hours ones where you had the, I forget, I'm not going to try and call it whatever it was, but they didn't, they were kind of backlit cabinet signs and they didn't seem like they were super intrusive, but I don't know if that's kind of what an alternative would be or that's something that's, is that what they're asking for or what is that?
I'd have to get more details on what they are proposing and what they might seek to propose if they were allowed to do more.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll go to Mayor Prot, we'll go to Counselor Favela, then Mayor Protam, Chipman.
Just out of curiosity, is there a noise difference with those lightings, the cabinet lighting versus the overhanging?
I don't know. It's a great question.
You said noise difference?
Yeah, so some of those larger cabinet signs, if you get close to them, there's like a buzzing that emits from them, and I'm just wondering if they're like thinking outside of the box, if there's a noise difference and if we want to take that into consideration when you're doing like closer to residential area, if that would be, you know, an annoyance to have some, if it might not even be an issue, but take, you know, looking at that.
Yeah, we can look into that.
I would hope that they were not going to put lights on the far side of that development. I mean, you know, on hillside, I mean, on Hillhurst that we're talking about, right across the street from the houses.
All where my own is going in?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how that's going to be set up, but that would be probably pretty troublesome to those houses that are facing that little development there. They're already, they're already upset enough, which is, I mean, I'm happy it's going in, I love it, but it'd be nice if there wasn't lighting that actually, you know, glared into their houses.
Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I mean, my initial thought was that I feel like it would be hard to really write code that could apply to every situation that we want. And I know that there's not a lot of these, but you know, I started going down like how far they were from X amount of residential units or whatever, or maybe the size of the signs. But then I started thinking like the, like the arched illuminated signs, those have kind of a nice, like quaint quality to it and charm to it that I think is more appropriate for residential zone anyway, as compared to like a backlit sign. And so, I don't know, I guess I feel comfortable with that being the expectation, and if that's where you want your business to go, that's, that's what the deal is. But I think that the, just the ambiance of it, for lack of a better way of putting it, is more appropriate for a residential zone.
And counsel, this isn't something that we have fully developed, so if it is something you want us to bring back on second reading, we can, or I think the question is, is it something that you would like us to bring back for second reading or not? So no need to decide, but it is kind of important for us to know whether to proceed.
Yeah, maybe counsel will look to you for kind of a consensus vote on that one, you know, just to see if, where you want to, where you want to go with it. I'm going to get some other comments here and then be thinking about that, we'll come back to that at the end here. So we'll start with Counselor Burkle and then Counselor Hamilton.
Do we know, do we even know what kind of signing they're proposing for that location?
So at this time, because of the current restriction in code, they're looking at doing the kind of gooseneck overhead lighting.
So the sign.
As far as this, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
As far as the height, size, location of the sign, I know our staff knows all that, but I would have to get that information from them.
So the sign itself would not be physically lit, but the light would come down over the top, is that correct?
Correct, that is the type of lighting that is currently allowed in the code for neighborhood business zoning.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you. I think that I'm such a visual person for this, in order to have a further conversation, I would want to see what those would really look like in that space and also the impact that it would have on neighbors. Like I want actual data of what that's going to transmit or any of that before, and if it affects anything too far, like Mayor Protam was saying, I think we stick to something like that because as much as we want to enhance commercial code, there are neighbors in that neighborhood that we have to think about. So I really, I need, I need visual in order to further this conversation personally.
I'd also add that I think that, you know, I appreciate that we're very proactive about this, I want to know maybe what should be changed, but when you think about it, especially like in a C&amp;B area, like is on Hillhurst right there, like that's the only group of businesses on Hillhurst, I think you're going to know that there is a business there. And, you know, like, I don't think you need a sign to tell you that, so I don't like a sign is going to make or break their business to kind of advertise that they're there. So maybe having something that's maybe kind of more on the side of protecting neighborhood, neighbors who, residences that live around there, rather than, you know, having an enhanced sign code, probably the most minimum, like the gooseneck sign, I think would probably look good. Same as we do for, like we just saw with all the neighborhood signs, like, you know, Kemper Grove and Paradise Point and stuff like that, they're kind of lit that way, so. Yes, go, wait, did you have something, Counselor Wells?
Yeah, I had just a question I had, or a concern I had. It depends on how high the signs are, because if you've got the Cobra Head, they make good monkey bars for turn around from vandalism, is where I'm coming from. If you don't have a very high sign, then kids will grab on them, bend them down, or swing off of them, or whatever, that way. That's my only concern.
Okay, go back to you, Counselor Hamilton, and we'll go the other direction.
Thank you. Mine was just to what you were just saying before this, I agree with a lot of that. I think though, I think a lot of our residents are opening businesses in there, so to just do our due diligence on the effects in general, so everyone feels represented, feels good to me.
Absolutely, I agree, yeah. Comments from this side? Davis?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I feel like, just piggybacking on the concerns that Counselor Hamilton brought forward, I don't think it's urgent enough to try and push something through on the second reading. I feel like it, I'm fine with this being a, you know, another standalone thing that we tackle a little bit further down the road, because it doesn't seem like there's urgency and I don't feel like we need to necessarily put a burden on staff to rush and, you know, I think it'd be, it'd be a challenge because we're asking for opportunities to be thoughtful, so.
I guess with that, I'd agree with that, as long as, does our current side code, sign code for commercial neighborhood businesses is, like, what is that? Like, you know, it's been asked several times and so I'm not. you know, I, I, it's been asked several times and so I'm not expecting to, I'm not asking again, but just, I, I just want to be mindful of that we're, since that's kind of like on the cusp of things, I don't think it's urgent, but also making sure that we're making the right decision that could impact that specific C and B area. So like, is there, is there anything that would be intrusive in the current code that they're proposing? Or are we, is it, is it going to be fine the way it is?
My understanding is that based on our staff working with the sign company, working with Hillhurst Commercial, that, um, they are able to make it work with our current code.
Okay. And in a way that works for our residences that are around there too?
Yeah, it requires external lighting aimed at, aimed at the sign, aimed down. And in any of these scenarios, our lighting code, um, signs and anything else requires lighting to be shielded and aimed downward.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so Counsel, I guess looking to the rest of you to see like, do you want staff to come back with something, some options for second reading? Or are you good with it now?
So we could always just go ahead and approve this and then, and amend it.
Yeah.
Later for part of it. I mean, it seems like, right?
Mm-hmm.
It feels like they've done a lot of work for us to not go ahead and approve what we have.
Yeah.
And then, yeah.
I think if it becomes an ongoing issue, then we look at it again. But I don't, it doesn't feel pressing right now. Correct?
Yeah.
Correct. Counselor Wells?
Yeah.
I would like to see some of the Cobra Head, just an illustration of what it looks like. It doesn't have to pick it out at the next meeting, but at least it was something that we could have in our purview before the next meeting.
Yeah, we can get some examples.
Yeah, so it sounds like nothing for staff to prepare other than maybe just some comparative examples for due diligence. That work for everybody? Okay.
Got it. Thank you. All right, that's signs. Um, I will move on to one more item and then hand it over to Mr. Stewart for the final item. So my one more item is on impact fees. I think we've had something for impact fees in, in the past two batches I've brought you, but the more you look, the more you find. So the proposal this evening is to amend the code to reflect our current practice, um, which is calculating impact fees at the time of building permit submittal and then collecting those impact fees for residential product, projects at the time of final building inspections, which is final occupancy. And for non-residential projects connecting, collecting the impact fees at the time of permit issuance with an option to defer now those non-residential traffic impact fees to final occupancy. So again, this is our current practice. Um, our current practice is supported by the code, but you have to look in a few different places. So the proposal is to just really clearly state, this is when we calculate and collect impact fees.
Great. Counsel, any questions on this one? Okay.
I did, okay.
Oh, Counselor Wells?
I think it just makes sense to instead of charging a while upfront before they ever get a, a product to put in use, to turn around and hold off until they get their occupancy or whatever and then collect it then because they're not causing an impact. Am I speaking right? What, what, what you've got wrote down?
Correct, Counselor. So for residential projects, the impact fees are always collected at final occupancy.
Yes.
For commercial projects, they are
Up front.
Collected at the time of building permit issuance, but we do have the option to defer traffic impact fees to, to final occupancy and that would be codified here.
Okay, sounds good.
That is all I have. Um, the final item in this update, I will pass over to Mr. Stewart and then head into the public hearing.
Thank you, Director Los. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Uh, I am delivering this item. This is something that has been worked on extensively by our Police Department and Planning Department, but uh, I will be delivering it this evening to you. This is a new code section in 5.40140, Special Events Right-of-Way Use Standards Adjacent to Parade Routes. Uh, this comes because as the city has grown and with the popularity of the Richfield Fourth of July Parade Celebration, more parade attendees have tried to assure their viewing spot by leaving chairs, robes, blankets, et cetera, along the parade route. This occurred earlier each year until it reached a point approximately six years ago, when public right-of-way along the parade route was blocked for almost a week ahead of the event, creating a safety hazard that negatively impacted ADA accessibility and access to businesses and homes. So currently, the intentional or negligent discharge of items, including those we just spoke of, onto any public land in the city is designated a public nuisance under RMC 1524020. Thus, without any further clarification, none of those space-saving measures would be allowed by law. However, the city has worked with event organizers over the years to establish reasonable allowances for when and how people could leave their chairs along the parade route safely and in a limited fashion that did not create the hazards being witnessed by downtown residents and merchants. Chairs were allowed to be placed along the parade route at 6:00 PM on the day prior to the event and left there until after the event the next day. However, there were no clear guidelines for two key points. One, could people arrive at the parade route with their chairs prior to 6:00 PM and wait with those chairs until the appointed time to leave them? And two, how many chairs could any one person save space for? In the intervening years, to answer these evolving questions, uh, the city manager exercised authority under RMC 5.40130 that allows the city manager to promulgate additional rules consistent with the terms agreed to for an event permit. Because sidewalks along the parade route are public property, uh, where there is a right to congregate, people have been allowed to do so prior to that 6:00 PM chair drop-off. However, with that allowance came uncertainty regarding whether people could put the chairs out along the parade route while they waited. Uh, if so, how many? The clearest guideline is that if a person has one chair to sit in, that would still be within the allowed congregation for that person in public space, which is allowed under the law. If they had additional chairs, it could be determined that those chairs were part of their property or part of discharged property. Um, but there was no clear sense of a guideline within that. To establish, uh, reasonable limits that promote public safety, embrace the nature of the event and allow the maximum number of residents to up, the opportunity to utilize this allowance, uh, a rule has been proposed to codify eliminating, uh, creating a limited right for people to a reasonable number of chairs that they could bring with them ahead of that 6:00 PM drop-off. Um, thus, we're asking the city council to clarify and codify that rule to create those limits for saving spaces along a parade route, not just for Fourth of July, but for any parade that the city may undertake. Uh, an easy example is there's been some conversation over the years of whether we should do, uh, you know, some sort of holiday parade or Christmas parade associated with hometown celebration. So the rules before you would apply to that as well. Uh, and that they would then create key and codified rules that are easier to implement and enforce. And so that there's a clear understanding from all the people that we serve as well as the people who serve them. In that, um, happy to go into greater depth on that, but again, key provisions would be, uh, ability to arrive at 12:00 PM on the day prior to the event and congregate with, uh, up to five chairs, including, uh, the one that you're in. So five chairs for every one adult 18 and over, um, would be allowed and then allowed to be left from 6:00 PM until the end of the event the next day. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Uh, Counsel, any questions on, on this one? Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you. I do not have a question, but I do have a comment. So I appreciate very much the balancing of the accessibility and safety while keeping it community-centered fun. I just want to make note and think that we need to be very intentional and strategic in our messaging to our residents. I think that this approach, I think, they, people are either going to feel supported or restricted. And I just want to make sure that we are very intentional in the rollout of letting people know why we do this, how we're protecting them, why we're looking out for this big fun event and future events that everybody loves. And that's just my, my little two cents.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Burkle?
Who would be out on the street actually counting chairs per resident?
So historically, that work has been done by, uh, Richfield Police Department. Uh, we had, uh, officers that were actually brought in on overtime as we do with a lot of our events. We have kind of all hands on deck for public safety. Uh, and they were the ones who were out there helping to enforce, uh, that, uh, code.
Thank you.
Counselor Wells, any comment from you? None?
I shake my head. I shake my head, no. And yes, I got a comment. The comment I have is probably when they turn around and use caution tape and hook it between 10 chairs, you know, that it's more than one person has, has, uh, set those chairs aside for all of their family members. So this will codify that you can only have five, five chairs with, uh, somebody sitting in one of them. So I think it's, it's a good proposal that we've put in forward.
And, and Counselor, it's a good clarification and in, within the code that was drafted, it does address other objects because that is something that we've seen is you'll put two chairs and then a bunch of caution tape in between. So it actually does speak to, um, chairs, but it also says any chairs or other objects, uh, along the parade route. So it does talk about, and it specifically identifies, um, such as ropes, blankets, tape, paint or chalk or other, other barrier of any kind. So it speaks to those barriers that people can create because again, part of creating the code is create clarity and ease of enforcement. And we don't want to create something that again is, is unclear for people about what the, the rules are.
Uh, Mayor Potem, any comments from you? Counselor Favella?
Very passionate about this. So just to be clear, when, uh, like Counselor Wells was speaking of, uh, no 10 chairs roped off, are we saying no to that period because there will be like many adults that will congregate, there's many chairs, and then at six o'clock we take off, everything's roped off. So are we saying after six o'clock, we're not doing that or?
Correct. Yeah, at 6:00 PM, so the prohibitions on placement and leaving, uh, go until 6:00 PM. And then at 6:00 PM, um, let me get the exact language for you.
Okay.
So I put my five chairs out, but I put three feet between each chair. I still feel... Forgive me here.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time finding it really quickly. I, let's say again. So, yeah, so what it's, basically it's speaking to is to until 6:00 PM. So the prohibition is until 6:00 PM. The, so it's speaking to and that the person placing the chairs is physically and constantly present at the occupied area until at least 6:00 PM on the evening preceding the parade.
Okay. The only one issue that I see with this, because I have seen this happen, are it is summertime, hot, 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 and you'll have an elderly couple come and put the chairs out. It is too hot for them to sit, so they'll go sit in a nearby vehicle. They're not actually there. And I am all for black and white, but I think sometime there's got to be gray that's appropriate. And if there is someone like an elderly person or someone with, um, that needs, um, an accommodation, uh, physically, then we, if they're nearby and say, those are my chairs, then that, that, that should be accounted for, um, if they're not physically able to be in them. And I don't know what that looks like or how we can work that in, but I would hate to have an 80-year-old man trying to get out of the heat and then say, no, you have to sit in the sun and bake until we take your chairs.
So it doesn't say you're actually to sit in them, but I don't know if this language gets to what you're after.
Yeah.
But it says that, uh, you must be physically and constantly present at the occupied area.
Okay.
I don't know if that captures...
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because usually we say you have to be sitting with them. You can't leave them unattended and somebody in their vehicle would be considered, you know what I'm saying, unattended. So I just want to make sure that like there's some flexibility within the parameters.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Counselor Davis, anything from you?
Yeah. And I, I believe what I'm going to say is an unpopular opinion, but, um, I go back to, I've, I've talked to a lot of people that they don't even go to the parade because they're like, I can't get there so early to get, you know, the safe spot. You got people with sidewalk chalk and, uh, you know, this is my area and caution tape. And you know, I mean, this goes in the right direction because it was like dozens of chairs like roped off and there's no spots. And it's just, I go back to, it's not saving anybody a trip the next day. All those people are still coming in. And so it's like, I don't know. Like as I said, unpopular opinion. I don't think it's going to change anything. But I'm like, why do we need to have people coming the day, night before anyway? Why can't we just say, eh, show up to the parade, right? Show up to the parade, put your stuff there and then you're sitting there and it's not this, I'm leaving my personal property there to possibly get vandalized. It seems like it just creates this environment that's ripe for conflict, whether it's, you know, related to people's property or, oh, we always sit in this spot and somebody came earlier than us. And I, I just, I don't know, that's not what it should be about. And so I just, this is more me airing the grievance as opposed to having a different policy proposal. But I just feel like it's going in the right direction, but I also question like the whole motive anyway. I would love to see just us have people show up to the parade and not have to over-regulate this puppy guarding, you know? Anyway, that's what I got.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Burkle, I think you got a comment?
Maybe I'm getting in the weeds here, but can I put my five chairs out and put three feet of space between each one?
Hmm.
It is something I'll have to look at a little bit more closely within the, the code as it is drafted and between first and second reading, I can get you that answer.
Thank you. Um, just one other comment. I, I've lived here now 20-plus years and every year, the parade is just a remarkable, remarkable event. And for as long as I've lived here, and we've talked about it, people have put chairs out a week in advance. Everybody has their private space. Everybody wants the same location. Um, do we really have to go to this length to, uh, do whatever? I, I don't even know how to phrase, phrase the question. It's worked, to me, it seemed like it's worked up until now, or maybe I'm unalert to issues we've had. But, uh, I just found it always remarkable, like someone referenced. There were chairs out a week in advance. You would think it was the Rose Bowl Parade.
Thank you, Counselor. I...
It's better.
It's better. I appreciate that. I, I want to maybe respond to a couple of things I've heard too. And, uh, first with Counselor Burkle's, I, I think that it is good to have it clear because, you know, up until this point, it has been at the city manager's discretion. There is sort of a, a rule. I think what we've heard through our staff briefings and, and then tonight is this helps RPD as they go through an enforcement process by just codifying it, right? Like there's a clear, there, there's a clear place in code for it rather than just, uh, maybe a gray area with the city manager's direction. So they can go and enforce it. It makes it easier for enforcing it. Uh, to Counselor Davis, your point, I'd, I'd, I would partially agree. I, I think part of it is, you know, the, out of something like that, there has been, I think, some interesting traditions that have developed. And so like over the last few years, uh, you can show up and you're there and it turns into like a little block party and you're hanging out for a bit. And it is a lot of fun. There's a lot of things happening downtown around that time the night before and it just feels very community-centric. So I, I don't mind it and it kind of brings people out. I do wonder if 12 o'clock is a little early, like do we need to give them six hours to camp out? Or, you know, is, is three hours? Can you cut it in half and start at 3:00 PM or something like that, some 3:00 to 6:00 PM? Um, I'm not looking at you, Counselor, because I, I know that you like to party. So, yeah. But I do like the idea of having it click clarified, but you know, like, and this is also one to, to your point where, you know, there's maybe a little bit of nuance in there. I think this is one of those things, just because of how you see how people get, it would be good to make sure it's really black and white. So it's like, hey, look, there is, you know, maybe we need to look at like, is there spacing? Is there minimum spacing between chairs? I hate to just bring up the white paint type of debate again, but it, I think, you know, you want to make sure that everyone, like, you don't want this to be a frustrating event for people that, to what Counselor Davis is saying, where people... for people that, to what Counselor Davis is saying, where people don't want to go to the parade at some point, or they feel like it gets like this catty thing or something like that. So I'd be supportive, I'm supportive of it as is, if that's where the council went. I would like to maybe consider maybe cutting that in half to 3:00 PM instead of 12:00. But I do think we just, I do like the idea of having a really clear-cut statute that we can go to that is enforceable. That's all. Any other comments or questions at this point? Do you have what you need from us, or do you need some more clarification? Oh, you have another comment?
I do. I think 3:00 is too late, and I think 1:00 is acceptable. That's all.
Well, certainly, I mean, we do have good information. We have a public hearing coming up. We may get more information from that. We can follow up with you and make sure that we have the detail between first and second reading on this to bring back to you.
Sure. Thank you, City Manager. Okay. This is the last one, so we can go to public hearing, I think, now.
Aren't we going to do the budget?
No, we're gonna, there's a, this is a public hearing item.
Oh.
On the code amendment. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address City Council regarding items not subject, whoops, excuse me, is my wrong. I'm going to open the public hearing. If you sign up with the city clerk before the meeting, your name will be called and you'll be receiving permission to unmute your microphone or step up to the podium. And if you did not sign up in advance but would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on your toolbar. If you're joined by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and press star six to mute or unmute, and the city clerk will grant you permission to speak. And when speaking, please state your name and keep your comments limited to three minutes, and there will be no back and forth between the council. This public hearing is now open. Is there anybody in the room tonight wishing to give comment during the hearing? Ms. Diana, anybody online?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have anybody.
Okay, I give it maybe another couple of seconds here. Anybody in the room? One last opportunity. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Okay. And then with that, let me find my spot here. Ms. Diana, would you please read the ordinance into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1468, an ordinance of the City of Ridgefield, Washington, amending chapters within titles 5, 9, 18, and 20 of the Ridgefield Municipal Code.
Thank you, and this is first reading only, will be coming back to us December 4th.
Because of the commerce noticing timelines, council likely won't be able to adopt till January, so it'll probably be later than December 4th.
It'll be coming back to us at a later time. Thank you, Ms. Les. Okay, we have one more public hearing on the agenda tonight. This is our first reading of ordinance number 1469. This is the 2026 proposed budget, and back to our Finance Director, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. First off, before we get into this, Diana, could you bring up the website here real quick? I just wanted to show council and the public the digital budget book that we have posted for the public to be able to see and where it is located. So if you go to our, our homepage and then you go to the Finance Department in Government and then over to Departments, and then click on City Budget, and then if you scroll down just a little bit, you'll see right there the proposed budget. So review the 2026 proposed budget. And this is our digital budget book that we've created. We will eventually have also a PDF document on there, but nobody wants to read 456 pages of a PDF document. So we do the digital budget book because we have seen more people going to look at it because they can really get to what they want to. What I'm asking of council is could you please review that and then give me any input of things that you think we did well, things that we might be able to improve? I, I really just want you to look at the budget, so we do have a few hits on that page, but that's where it is. So we can go back to our presentation. The budget's been, we're, we're near the end. It's been a pretty long process. We started back in May. We had a council retreat where we got some direction, management retreats. We've had three meetings with the Budget Advisory Committee, three study sessions with council, and this is the second public hearing that we've had on the budget as well. So obviously, council, you've seen this quite a bit, so I'm just going to briefly go over where we're at with the 2026 budget summary. Total revenue is just over 80 million, total expense of just about 81 million. We're using just about 900,000 of overall fund balance, and I'll kind of go over that here in a moment. Our operating budget, which is our general fund, our street fund, our building and permitting water fund and stormwater fund, the budget there is just about 28 million. Personnel expense is 53.3% of that budget, and operations and maintenance 34%. And then capital outlay, capital leases and debt service make up the additional part of that budget. So if we jump to our policy reserves, we've gone over this before, so I'll just again show that we are going up about 1% overall in our policy reserves in those operating And then we can go ahead and jump on slide five. We do have the overall budget, but again, we just went over the information on what the bottom line part of that budget is. So let's go to slide six, please. And what I want to point out is just the change in fund balance of what we're using in the operating funds. We're using about 1.1 million in fund balance. 450, 5,000 roughly is out of the general fund, and then we are using 370,000. I'm pointing out the two larger ones in the water operating fund. Those are all for one-time use. So let's go to slide seven. These are our capital service funds. These help pay for our debt service and our capital projects. We're actually increasing the fund balance by just over a million dollars is the projection. On slide eight, this is our special revenue funds. The main ones are the tax increment area, affordable housing and transportation benefit district. We're using overall about 131,000 of fund balance in those funds. And then on slide nine, these are our capital project funds, both general, water, storm water utility, and then our equipment replacement fund. We're using roughly 700,000 in fund balance there for a total of just about 899,000 overall in fund balance. So I just wanted to point out that's, when you look at the revenues versus the expenses, that's how we're balancing out the budget. We're still maintaining our policy reserves. So the other thing that council does approve through the budget process is our full-time equivalent amount of employees that we are available to have. Currently, we have 86.75 authorized positions of that. It's 85 full-time and three part-time positions. Council has approved to move forward within the budget for additional full-time positions. One will be the city attorney, which is transitioning from a contract attorney, two police officers, an engineering technician, and then also providing the staff the ability to add two additional seasonal positions by authorizing the funding for that. Seasonal positions, staff make decisions on what we can do based on council giving us the funding to be able to do that. What we're looking at is two seasonal positions, one for street maintenance and one for stormwater maintenance. That is what council approves through the budget. That is our, our first reading. That's the information. I'll answer any questions that you may have. I know this is very quick, but we've covered this in depth for several months now.
Great, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Council, opening up the questions at this time. Counselor Hamilton?
Don't have a lot of questions tonight, but I do have comments. So I just wanted to say, I think specifically these, the four FTEs that are coming in, the full-time and then seasonal, I think it's so indicative of our growth and being strategic about making sure we maintain our level of service for our residents. So I just wanted to say that I think it's just so spot-on with what we need to do, and I really appreciate all the work you've done.
Counselor Birkel?
The two officers, does that include the one who just graduated from?
That is already an authorized position.
It is.
So we have, this will be two new positions that we'll continue recruiting for.
All right, thank you.
Counselor, no comment? Anybody else? Okay, I think we're done with comments there. I'll just end it by saying I thank you to you and the staff again for all the hard work. I, like you mentioned it yourself, but like, you know, I think that we get to this point in the year and we have a couple of public hearings by this time, everyone has seen it a million times and, you know, we've, we've asked a lot of our questions, but that's because we've been doing this since May and probably you since before that. So I do appreciate it, and again, it's another, it's another testament to the strength in of the management of the city, and you guys should be proud and the Finance Department at the direction and leadership of you, Mr. Johnson. So thank you for your effort there, and I'm proud to, to be able to endorse this as well. So.
Yes.
Thank you so much. If there are no questions and no comments, I'm going to open the public hearing to receive testimony. The public hearing is now open. If you sign up with the city clerk before the meeting, your name will be called and you will receive permission to unmute your microphone or step up to the podium. If you did not sign up in advance but would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on your toolbar. If you're joined by the phone, press star nine to raise your hand and press star six to mute or unmute. The city clerk, the city clerk will grant you permission to speak, and when speaking, please state your name and keep your comments to three minutes. Again, there will be no back and forth between the council. This public hearing is now open. Okay, Ms. Diana, is there anybody online who signed up for comment during the public hearing?
I do not have anybody.
Okay, and I'll look around the room. Is there anybody in the room who would like to give comment during the public hearing? Okay, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing, and Ms. Diana, would you please read the ordinance into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1469, an ordinance for the City of Ridgefield, Washington, adopting the 2026 budget and providing for the effective date thereof.
Great, thank you very much. And again, this is first reading only. This will be coming back to us on December 4th for second public hearing and ratification. Thank you again, Mr. Johnson and your staff, and we were going to move.
Thank you.
Yes. We're going to move on. Okay, it is now time for public comment. Anyone wishing to, requesting to speak to the council regarding items not subject to a specific public hearing may come forward at this time. Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes. Written comments may be submitted. For controls over the phone, press star nine to raise your hand and press star six to mute or unmute, and the city clerk will grant you permission to speak. When speaking, please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody wishing to give public comment in the room tonight? Ms. Diana, anybody online?
I do not see anybody.
Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and move on from public comment and going to council reports. What's that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Counselor Davis, would you like to start with your council report?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I just got thrown off. I was thinking public comment for our public hearing. Anyway, yeah, busy week, and I guess to tie into my, my work life, I was working with students yesterday because it is the season, and we were talking about the difference between thankfulness and gratitude. And I love the word and the concept gratitude. It's something I try and practice myself, and so I wanted to give my council report from a perspective of gratitude. I guess for starters, this wasn't on the original list, but I have a lot of gratitude that I was able to drop a Seinfeld reference in the meeting today. So that is one of my favorite shows, and I appreciate that. I was actually very much filled with gratitude over the weekend in just being with all of you, most of you at the, the Retreat for the Youth Commission, and just really thankful for, for staff and for the support of this council and what I think is just going to be a really special thing for our city. I was very, very fortunate to be able to, right before the meeting, go with Counselor Wells and Counselor Birkel and Mayor Cole to the ribbon cutting of the Shriners Children's Clinic in Salmon Creek. It is their first location in southwest Washington, and it was just fantastic to be able to represent that. That's an organization that is very meaningful to my family, and so it was really special to do that. And then earlier in the week, we had the C-Trans meeting, and there was a lot of heavy stuff on the agenda, and, you know, just seeing people try and respectfully bring their community's perspective and trying to weigh, you know, what's good for me, what's, but what's also good for the, the better. It was, it was a really, really healthy dialogue, even though it was legally entangled. And then it, it ended with, you know, you know, some, some news that put a lot of that into perspective, and, you know, that was just a really unique experience that I'm actually really thankful for and really inspired by a lot of the leaders, not just here, but within our community. And so it, it, it has just kind of been a, a couple of weeks of gratitude for me of, of really bucket-filling things. And so, I don't know, I just want to thank you guys, and that's my report.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Favela?
Yes. Mayor, before I give my report, would you be okay if I asked Chief Nor to come up? Because I have some questions about some of the rate increases and the piggyback contract.
Yeah, I think we can do that if we, if we move quickly.
Yep, that's fine. Thank you for joining us tonight. I just had two or three questions specifically about that calculation for AMR. So AMR is raising their increases, which would then have a rate increase for Clark Calletts Fire for the ambulance. So how were those rate increases calculated? Is there a cost of service analysis, inflation, staffing, equipment costs? Like what goes into that?
It's actually not a short answer.
Right.
You have to look historically EMS District Two, which is made up of unincorporated Clark County and the cities of Ridgefield, La Center, Woodland, and Battleground. And it used to also include the city of Vancouver. And Vancouver in 2015 decided to have their own contract with, with AMR for service. So for 2015 through 12/31/24, Vancouver controlled the contract, and 10 years ago, that left EMS Two with not a lot of choice about what to do. It would have been too expensive to get their own ambulance contract, so they piggybacked with Vancouver. Last year, Vancouver sent a letter to EMS Two.
Right.
That said, you can come along with us for one more year, then you have to go on your own. That caused the system to split into two systems, and AMR proposed that the entities, EMS Two and the, and the entities make up EMS Two and Vancouver would each have to pay a standby subsidy. So as we negotiated on behalf of EMS Two, we said that our, the information we got from people within the EMS Two is they did not want to pay a standby subsidy. So for EMS Two, that would have been approximately $700,000, and if you do it up by, by responses, Clark County as a government would have to come up with 500,000. Battleground would come, would have to pay 25,000. Ridgefield would have to pay 40,000. Woodland would pay 40,000, and La Center would pay 25,000 roughly. And to not, and so, and Vancouver would pay just over $1 million. Vancouver has chosen to pay that from their budget, and so they're going to pay an additional million dollars to have AMR on standby. EMS Two said, we don't, we don't want to obligate our entities to pay that, and so AMR is raising their rates to make up for the, the revenue they would not get through the standby.
Okay. And in turn, you, the department is going to raise the rates to match for the ambulance service from Clark Calletts?
We are. We match the rates in EMS Two, and the reason we do that is multifold. First of all, in order to pay for the ambulance, we need to have revenue also, and our intent is to place a second ambulance in service with part of the revenue that's generated with the first ambulance as well as the EMS levy. And that second ambulance will continue to serve the district and keep response times low on critical calls. Secondarily, we didn't want to get in a situation where a person, say on one side of the street, falls down and breaks their arm, which is considered a low priority call.
Right.
They're going to get AMR, and they're going to get a bill. And a person on the other side of the street falls down and breaks their femur, which is considered a high priority call, and they would get a CCFR ambulance, and they would get a bill. And we felt it was important to not try to create a situation that has people saying, can I get the red? And we felt it was important to not try to create a situation that has people saying, "Can I get the red ambulance instead of the white ambulance?" What you get is the ambulance based on the triage out of, of the call. And if it's a serious medical call, you get the CCFR ambulance. And if it's a less serious call, you get AMR. And that way, we're able to reduce our response times here in the district, get critical care on scene sooner, but also not displace private sector jobs.
And very last question is, with the jump and the increase, what happens if someone does not have the ability to pay for that bill? Would the department go after collections or how would that impact our community, our families?
There is the ability to request a reduction based on need. And a lot of that is, is based on, on, I don't have a specific in front of me tonight because I was not prepared to answer questions. But if there is a need, you can make application to have that portion reduced.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Okay, in the last couple of weeks, I've been busy. I've attended Leadership Clark County. I attended a really awesome NAACP panel discussion with a lot of different leaders in the community. And it was a really robust conversation. I also attended the Youth Commission Retreat and I'm really impressed by our youth who are on the board. And I'm really excited to see what they're going to do. And yesterday, I was at Ridgefield High School all day for a durable skills day. And I got to help interview over a hundred students during mock interviews. And watching those students go through these interviews and just the quality of interviews that they're doing at sophomore, junior, senior levels, never having a job before, I was really impressed with how driven they are, how well spoken they are. And I was just grateful to be a part of that opportunity. I also attended the Executive Women's Council and then a fire district meeting as well. So. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wells, but are you next?
Okay, I did attend the Veterans Ceremony. I did attend the Veterans Ceremony on the eleventh down at Overlake Park. It was a beautiful day. It didn't rain and they were really, really happy. Thirteenth, the study session. The fifteenth, for personal reasons, I was unable to attend the Youth Commission. I really regret that because I would have loved to have been there, but it just, things happened and so I couldn't do it. The nineteenth, the briefing. Today, the twentieth, the Shriners Ribbon Cutting. A lot of people there. Only four people, well, I'm gonna steal your thunder, from the city of Ridgefield with their city council badges and mayor badge on and that, nobody from Vancouver. So we stepped up to the plate again and Ridgefield was in the audience and counsel tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate the update. Counselor Burkle, we'll go to you next.
Thank you. Just a couple of things to report. On eleven seventeen, I attended a Main Street meeting and our Ms. Lust made a wonderful presentation to Main Street regarding development and things going on in Ridgefield. And it was really, really, really appreciated. I too attended the Youth Commission Retreat. It, to me, is absolutely remarkable, the quality of the young people we have in our community. The opportunity to interact with them, the questions they presented were just, just remarkable. We're blessed with this commission. And then today too, I attended the ribbon cutting for the Shriners facility. I think as someone reported, it's the only one in southwest Washington, if I'm not mistaken. And, or southwest Washington? Yeah, great facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you. I had a similarly messaged approach of gratitude. Youth Commission being number one, I think it was so inspiring to see so many kids so confident. I think I used to be a little bit shyer than I am now and to watch kids, eighth graders, all the way up to twelfth graders, feel like they had every right to say their voice, which they do. But I, I think that that's such a unique, cool, awesome thing. It like really inspired me. And then on that similar note, I went to the second strategic planning session for Ridgefield School District, which I know all of us in this room love to see such a community engaged approach to things. And it was so well-run. We did empathy interviews for this one. So we had to go into the community and talk to two to five, however many you could find, people that maybe are underrepresented in the school system. And Dr. Jenny is very thorough and she gave like prompts on how to compose an empathy interview. So like, tell me about what makes a great school experience. Tell me about a time you felt really known and understood. On the flip side, when have you not? And it was really interesting to hear those conversations and then have a room full of seventy-ish people having those conversations. And we broke it down with challenges and opportunities and it was just, it was really cool. And my next assignment is, they did a survey of everything that parents and staff want to see in the district. And we have ten tickets. So it's like going to a menu. She says there's like a menu. So we have ten tickets to give and you can give ten if you really, she's like, if you really like chicken parmigiana, you put it all on chicken parmigiana. But it's all the things that are affecting the district. And we get to come back in two weeks and have a conversation about where we think our ticket should be spent. And I just think these kind of events that are so community engaged and so thoughtful are so inspiring and I'm very grateful.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Mayor Protem?
I too attended the Main Street meeting and, which was excellent, Ms. Lust, very excellent. And Ms. Rodriguez spoke also, which was a great report out on the schools. In the spirit of gratitude, Neighbors Helping Neighbors has very, been very, very blessed in the last couple of weeks with a lot of donations from many, many, many different people, which has been a great thing because this is a time of great need. And so we have been very blessed to get a lot of donations and we are very, very thankful. I did go to the Chamber of Commerce last Friday and their whole meeting was about, was about helping nonprofits. And so I got to talk about neighbors and a few of them signed up to, to support us. And for that, I'm also very thankful. I got to go to the Art Board. I'm on the Art Board representative. And, and they are so excited about, about this, about this art gallery that they're able to open. And they've worked on that for so long, Kathy, so long waiting for that. So they're very, very excited about that. That's gonna be a great thing for Ridgefield. And they also are giving three hundred gingerbread houses to their Family Resource Center for kids that come there. So that's a really cool thing. I think, don't you do that every year? Yeah, yeah. So that's a really cool thing that they do. Attended the, the Clark Regional Wastewater. The new, the new commissioner that is replacing Neil Kimsey is very, very qualified. His name is Dan Clark. He worked in Portland. He was over there, their system there for quite a few years, like twenty-five years, retired and has been attending the Clark Regional Wastewater meetings now for about ten years. And so he is extremely qualified to take on this position. He's very excited about, about being elected to that. Let's see here. I haven't been able to go to the Library Board because they meet at the same time that we've been having our study session. So that one, I haven't been to. But CRA DC and Clark Regional and the Art Board. So that's it for me.
That's it, huh?
Yeah.
Starting a lot. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, just from my end, I'm gonna touch on one issue that we've been working really hard on just on, from the city perspective. And I've reported on it several times. As you all know, we have been working through this CTRAM Board Composition Review Committee and trying to figure out a, a good solution that would, that would bring up an equitable board composition for the CTRAM Board. As you know, there's quite a few pretty big issues on the horizon that affect our transportation systems. One of which is maybe a bridge that's gonna, may or may not come here in the next few years. And that's a, that's a big driver for what the board composition looks like from CTRAM's perspective. And so we had been working on this over the last few weeks to come up with maybe a compromise. As you know, council reported previously, over the last couple of months, that committee had landed on what was called a three-three-three composition, which means three from the small cities, three from the county and three from the city of Vancouver. And unfortunately, that, that was kind of wrought with peril a little bit when I guess Washington State Department of Transportation decided to, to step it up a little bit and served the BCRC a third party, a third party notice that they were filing suit. And so we had to respond to that. So thank you to Ms. Parker, our city attorney, who worked with us to respond to that on behalf of the city of Ridgefield and the city of Le Center and the work we went, we went into that. So we went into the BCRC meeting on, was that Monday? Was it, was it Tuesday? Tuesday, yes. We went into that on Tuesday and had kind of worked out, I guess, more, more of a middle ground. So clear that maybe there wasn't the appetite to keep pursuing the three-three-three model. And so in order to get to the four-three-two model, which gives four seats to the city of Vancouver, three to the county, and then reduces the small cities down to two seats. We, there, there was a couple of stipulations offered up. And one of which was that the small cities had all said that they did not want to participate in the funding of light rail transportation on the new bridge. And so any funding that would come for that would not come out of our, the small city PTBA dollars and would have to be sought elsewhere. And then additionally, I offered amendment just to make sure that we were in full compliance. The concern was in statute, it says that no one component city could have a majority on the CTRAM Board. And that doesn't mean jurisdictionally, it just meant that like that city couldn't be represented. And so I offered an amendment that said that the county council seats would have to come from, board representation from the county council would have to come from seats that were not primarily in one jurisdiction that would give it a majority. In this case, would be Vancouver. Surprisingly, that got accepted even by the city of Vancouver. I'm waiting for the other shoe to drop there, but that, that did pass. So, so, so the motion, the amended motion did pass and so that, that carried through. Tentatively, right now, it was referred to the CTRAM Board of Directors for ratification there. They did, they didn't end up taking action on it, but it looks like we will be in a four-three-two situation, hopefully with a couple of situations, stipulations that stick. We'll see. There, I think they're gonna explore some continued legal options. But we were able to respond to the, the suit and then maybe stave off some litigation for the time being. That was, that was the update from, from CTRAM. Unfortunately, that was also, I, that was, came with some bad news too. So Molly Costin, who is the city councillor from the city of Washougal, has chaired the CTRAM Board and has chaired the BCRC over the last couple of months. Molly, you know, we got to that meeting and Molly did not show up. And we later found out that she had passed away unexpectedly earlier that day. So, so it was kind of, kind of overshadowed. There's a, there's a kind of a political meeting, but it was sort of, you know, it was overshadowed by, by the, the passing of a dear public servant. So Molly had served on Washougal City Council, I think, since 2005. Actually served as Washougal's mayor for a time, had left and came back. And most recently was, was known for her chairmanship of, of the CTRAM Board and the BCRC. So with that, I'd like to extend our deepest condolences on behalf of the city of Ridgefield to Molly and her family and to the city of Washougal and that, that community. She was a lovely public, public servant, a very delightful person to know and will be missed. So with that, I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I too am grateful for our community that we live in, the work that we get to do together and all of you. And I hope you have a wonderful holiday and we'll see you after that. With that, we'll go to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council and the community, in the spirit of Thanksgiving. And I appreciate that we're going with the spirit of Thanksgiving. We have not already moved on past Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving is an important holiday. The turkey, the stuffing, all of the spixings and the sides, the food makes the day and the family to eat it. So I hope everybody does enjoy a wonderful feast with family next Thursday. But in that spirit of gratitude, on a very similar vein to what the mayor just stated, we as staff are very, are very, very much in debt to you all as leaders, both locally and regionally. You take on issues that are beyond our walls, but look at them with the view of how it affects your residents, your constituents. And we appreciate you for that, whether it's CTRAM, which certainly has impacts well beyond the walls of Ridgefield, but certainly impacts the people who live here, whether it's homelessness issues, whether it's parks issues, whether it's the economic development of our community. There are a lot of issues going on regionally that you are taking a leadership role in. And it's not something a lot of cities do. With regards to Molly, I had the pleasure of serving with Molly when I was a county commissioner. And she was a council member in Washougal and we served on the Regional Transportation Commission together amongst, amongst other things. And she was a servant leader. And for my money, they're the best kind. Is that you have some people that lead, but they don't understand the public servant role. And they just want to be out in front and have their head up. She was never that person. She was always a person with her head down and doing the work and looking to do it the best way for the people who she was serving, never with an idea to put her name on it. I mean, I think seeing her name as many times as it's been in the press for the past 24 hours would not be her, her favorite thing to see. Because she enjoyed doing her work behind the scenes and I loved working with her. And she will be dearly missed by the people that she served and the people who loved her and still do. On other regional issues, the only other regional issue I do want to make sure that we make note of is the comp plan. The Comprehensive Plan Update, that's well underway, obviously. We just had a study session on that last week. Thank you very much for your input. We are finalizing comments for the draft environmental impact statement that we will submit to Clark County likely by Wednesday of next week because the comment period ends on Sunday of Thanksgiving weekend, which isn't optimal for the last four days of a 30-day comment period to be on holiday. But it is what it is. So we will get our comments in on that. Also, the mayor and I are meeting with Counselor Matt Little to walk through some of the priorities of the city of Ridgefield, show him those areas and how they can not only serve the interests of the residents of Ridgefield, but also of the greater community in Clark County. So looking forward to that conversation with him as well. And lastly, gratitude to our staff who worked on the Youth Commission again, and that's Megan Nemos and it's Lena Ottenares, who, you know, did a ton of work to bring together the Youth Commission and the retreat and all that it was and will be. So great work on our staff from that. And pioneer widening, I've heard from almost all of you, I think I've heard from all of you, at how well it's coming together. So our Capitol team, Miranda and Grant and the entire Capitol team that's been working on this has been doing great work and it's a huge project. And it is very close to completion. We have a couple of weeks of punch list work that will go on. The beautiful artwork for the roundabout at Discovery Drive will go in after Thanksgiving. And we will see this wonderful asset opened up completely for our residents. With that, I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I appreciate the update. Mr. Stewart, council, any questions for the city manager? All right, thank you, sir. We'll go to Mr. Thamer in Public Works next.
All right, thank you, council. Only one thing tonight. As you may have noticed, leaves are falling everywhere. And for the last several weeks, our Public Works Department, streets, parks, cemetery and stormwater crews have been working diligently to pick up leaves. But with over thirty parks and over forty mile, lane miles of road, there are areas that are, it's stacking up faster than, than we can get those picked up. But I just want to, you know, mention that we are not stopping. We will continue. And in the next week or so, we'll get those completely picked up and the city cleaned up again. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Thamer? Thank you for your efforts. And just to be clear, do we, we sweep our leaves into the street and then, is that, that's a rule, right?
No.
Right, Mayor Protem? I'm giving her our time because, I know. Don't do that.
Don't do that, yes.
Thank you for your efforts. It's a big job. Okay, we'll go to Finance and Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we do catch you doing it, we'll be sending out a bill.
You won't see me doing it. I already did my leaves and I put them in the green bin. Thank you. Is that all you have? Threats of bills? Okay. Community development and we'll go to Ms. Lust.
Thank you, Mayor. Someone can always be a hero and walk around with a stick clearing out storm drains, right? I do not have anything else this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Lust, council? Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Ottenares? Nothing, okay. We'll go to Ms. Parker online.
Hello?
Hello.
There we are. Hello. I don't have anything to report, but just happy to answer any questions. I don't have anything to report, but just happy to answer any questions, and looking forward and grateful to be able to see you maybe a little more often next year.
We're looking forward to having you a little more often next year, yes. Good stuff, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, lastly, we'll go to Lieutenant Andrew with RPD.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report for tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions for the lieutenant? Okay, well, thank you. With that, this meeting is hereby adjourned.